Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:30. It's Monday. And we're about to begin our extraordinary session during this COVID era of a Board of Selectmen's meeting. We primarily focus on COVID events or non-events, hopefully. And we also try to take up some business that we can dispatch without too much trouble. As is typical, we'd like to start with our health agent and see if we can get an update on COVID.
So we had the two reported vacations last week. And then some guidance came out with Thanksgiving coming.
Chief, can you send them the mic?
Here we go. And with the, with Thanksgiving holiday on its way, the state has a travel order in effect. If you submit a travel form through the state, it will allow text messaging onto your phone, and then you'll know the exact quarantine periods, or if you just need one negative test before you're free and clear. So I'd like to bring that to the public's attention, because people might be traveling out of state, and that's what you're supposed to do. The enforceability of it will fall on us if I get any calls. Yeah, that's pretty much what happened since last meeting.
Bob, for the cases at the elementary school, have those shown up yet on Maven? And if not, what's happening?
Okay, so... I print the first responders list for the chief every Monday morning. And I was looking at it. All of a sudden, I had five people at a certain address. But I hadn't had three of them come down as case IDs to me in Maven. So I dug a little bit deeper into the workforce flows, and those three cases appeared there. On a normal basis, what would happen is I get a case ID number that comes down, and then the chief or I push it through to contact tracing. Never got any notification on these three cases. So they haven't been pushed through into contact tracing. I'll have to take them on myself. But where the disconnect is right now, I sent an email out to the help desk, the same one that you talked to last week, and hopefully they'll figure out where. But I just found this by chance.
Okay, so Bob, what I'm gonna do later today is I'm gonna add those three now into the official counts for us.
Right.
So I was gonna ask you one last, because I saw that already.
So I've been waiting for those three to pop as cases, but they have. But they do, if I go into my, the workflows part of it, chief. So... Yeah, I'm pretty sure I got them. But we can work it together.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what your thoughts on this latest, so cruel about a vaccine.
About a vaccine? Well...
What did the CDC say?
CDC, yeah, says when it comes out, it will be safe. Because they have different groups that they've done tests on, bodies involved in it. So, you know, that's the first thing. Is it safe? And then what's the efficacy? Well, we won't know, because the trial's been pushed through faster than probably any drugs ever come to market. So, you know... Yeah, I think it'll be interesting twofold. One, right now, we have various vaccines, but people are very reluctant to take them, too. So whether people will jump on board with this or not, I guess time will tell. But I think it will be safe. Just matters...
Those don't begin again.
Well, yes, you know?
Well, every vaccine has its potential downfall.
Absolutely. I mean, every vaccine, every drug. And they're gonna list every potential side effect. I mean, you know, you just watch any TV commercials or anything lipatory, it gives you everything from hangnail to possible death. So where falls in between, and which companies are putting it out, too? I mean, Pfizer's top-notch company, that's for sure. And then how's it get paid for? Does it come out of your insurance? Does it...
Well, how do you produce enough of it? I mean, in any, I mean, we're talking potentially billions of people. It's gonna be a challenge, no matter what.
Probably the vaccine is the temperature which needs to be solid. The chief is thinking this issue, and maybe they're free to do this.
Exactly.
So a lot, not a lot, most have that ability to store something so far.
No, that's basically liquid nitrogen, and that in itself is dangerous. And I guess, so it gets stored like that, then once you take it out, you have like, I think it's a four to six hour shelf life on the table. So if it was in a dispensing site, it doesn't have to stay at that temperature, as long as you know you're gonna use it all. Whatever you don't use those, no good. Because you can ration it out, and then I would think just storing it, if it's at that temperature.
Injecting that temperature into a body is not a good thing.
Yeah, I haven't seen that they're being on how to... No, they were talking about issues of finding, you know, keeping it short.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
So on the three cases that you're talking about, have, if they're school cases, has that been communicated to the school?
Actually, the school communicated to me.
Okay.
On...
That was a week ago.
The ninth.
Okay.
Yep, Kane emailed me, and I'm like, that's news to me. I'm the last one to find out, but I am the public health agent. So that's what I've been digging at this thing since the ninth.
Since school, so the school got awarded, but that level up didn't update for your caseload numbers.
Right.
The last two minutes, we just got a new case.
Okay.
So, chief, I'm sorry, one more beyond those?
Yeah, we just, well, we just got notified a new case out and opened it up.
Okay. Okay, so it makes, I'll add four, okay.
On, on the school aspect, the updated guidance, I know everyone's aware, came out. I watched Kingston's elementary school meeting last Monday night. They took a vote to move in a sub, a sub-separate group, which is basically the cohort D for all of the area. So they're gonna try to get those students in five days a week. Those are the kids that need care just above every day to try to improve in the learning issues that they have. So they're trying to make that happen for December. They have logistical issues to work out, lunches and schedules and things, but that's what they have.
You're talking about for Wednesdays?
For Wednesdays at the, I think they're at the intermediate school, but the elementary school not quite positive, where each program is located for those students. But that was the discussion. The discussion was also, they, they took a vote to go full return, and it was a 2-2 tie in Kingston. So I think at the, not at tonight's school committee meeting, but the following Monday's regular scheduled one, we're gonna discuss what would need to occur for a full return for Halifax. Because Halifax and Clinton are great, Kingston was weak. So is that the session? Although I was wondering if Bob had any thoughts on whether or not you think that's a good idea, where we've got this ten person limit in a household, and if you think that that's... Because in order to fit the students to come back full return, you're not gonna be at six foot.
Now, the issues I would see with full return, starting with transportation, would be my first concern, on and off the buses. Right now, the buses are very limited. And the school setting itself, in my opinion, would be safe. I think what's happening is what's happening, what happens outside of school, you know? Whether it be organized sports, whether it be youth groups, whether it be co-hasset and party undisclosed, that's what brings them back into the school set. So, you know, you've got a double-edged sword. But the school seems to be one of the safer places of that, of the edges.
Okay. Your transportation would be the big thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, it has to start there.
More parents may opt to wanna drop their kids off, which just, I mean, it's already tough even under these conditions, that just kind of...
Well, we've had relatively nice weather, too. I mean, won't you throw the snow mix into it, or, you know?
Yeah.
Kingston, Kingston was looking for the, they didn't, they didn't actually vote a date, but they were talking about getting after Thanksgiving break to go full. Yeah, but they, their next meeting is, I think, the first or second week in December and up, so...
Would that on the night of the final school, high school?
No, so there's, so there needs to be four separate votes. So...
Do you know what the bus situation would have been, like, as far as the transportation?
I don't. And then one of the questions that they went over in Kingston, and Christine's supposed to have for us for the Monday, not tonight, the next Monday night meeting.
No, just, 'cause even the drop, like, the cars, everyone's off the road, but it's still pretty full, but, I mean, so if you're looking at doubling, potentially doubling that... Yeah, that was, that was my concern.
Yeah.
And then you're doing it every day, you know?
Right.
I think a lot of the pushback is because there were a lot of districts that weren't even doing hybrid in the state.
They would just do it all in one?
Yeah. And I, and I think the government's orders to try to push back on that. I mean, I know that this is an ideal situation for the students and the parents and everybody else in the community, but it seems to be working. I'm not saying it's ideal. It just, if there is a student that comes down with it, by the time you find out, it's already the next cohorts at school. So there's time to, I mean, they are separated in that system. So I, I don't know. I just wanted to ask your opinion, see if anybody else had any, in case we didn't have another meeting this week to talk about that.
It's just such a hard call. Thank you.
So just to do the, let's talk, texted with Charlie a little bit over the weekend, talking about testing. I have somewhat of a proposal on the, looking at kind of a three-phase approach, being employee testing, then average population, it's general public. This is specific to employee testing plan. Very, this is pretty much exactly, it's exactly what's been done in the Cushing, in many of the Cape communities. They're doing, they're doing the rapid antibody testing once a month on any employee who wants that, who wants that. And anyone that comes back with a finding of anything other than negative, they're doing the PCR nasal swab, swab test. So my proposal, looking at estimating roughly 200 employees that would participate. I reached out to Kane to see if he thought they would, that if the teachers would be interested, and he definitely thought so. So Charlie said 250 employees.
200 to 250.
I'm asking, I'm basing this on 200. And then having enough PCR tests, you know, available, if there was a 10% positive rate, which seems to be, that would be very high. But the, the rapid tests are $10 apiece. This is a three-month plan, it would be 600 tests, $6,000. The PCR tests are $100 apiece, $10,000. And then we would have on-duty staff doing it, but I think we would still need one additional person. My intent would be to do it, testing two days a week. We could alternate, you know, alternate locations and have employees sign up, contact Kendra to get an assigned time, scheduling the appointments 10 to 15 minutes apart. You know, we could do a day here at town hall, do a day at the school, do a day at police station for police employees, and try to get all employees covered over the cost of, over the course of one month. My estimate for that, for the next three months, would be 22,800, which I believe would be, could be covered under the CARES.
Well, you know, we need to talk about that in a minute.
I pretty much presented this for the purposes of discussion, and then I attached the, the information on the rapid tests along with it.
Chief and I had communicated during the weekend, he had a concern that in some of the communities, they're getting pushed back from residents, because they're saying, "Oh, you're only having cases because you tested." I'll, I'll take that speech, that's fine.
You either have them or you don't have them.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if people want to make that as a point of why we shouldn't be doing testing, there's nothing preventing them from not being tested. But as we've seen here, having a source of rapid testing available to employees can quickly help to find the situation that we're in, and in many cases, be able to get employees back to work more quickly. I think that's a win for everybody, despite any naysayers. As far as the cost is concerned, unless the feds change something, our CARES funding is gonna run out at the end of December on the 30th. So any expenditures we might make after that time, we're gonna be on the hook for. I, you know, my opinion is it's worthwhile to do that. Legally, we're in a state of emergency, both at our level and at the state level. That won't change anytime soon. Therefore, we can, in fact, expend money without having an appropriation. It doesn't mean that it doesn't cost us anything. At some point, your books have to balance. Either A, we lower the amount of free cash available come June 30th, because in essence, we've spent it in advance, or we spend free cash at Talmene to cover these expenditures. But again, I think it's gonna be a worthwhile thing to do, but it does mean that we're spending money, not that we don't have, but that we're going to not have available later on for something totally different. But given the emergency and given our interests, I think it's a valid decision to make to approve the expenditure of money for the testing program. The chief and I talked about doing a slow opening, in a sense of, let's start with a defined set of population and roll it out for the employees and... If there are logistical hurdles to deal with, then we're dealing with far fewer people. We don't, you're not gonna get, you see those photographs in various locations across the United States right now, of hundreds of cars in lines. And my idea is roll it out to the employees, and then chief, you know, and I talked about, okay, if a second group, if we're capable of handling that, and we have additional capacity, then roll it out to, as he mentioned, the rural population, seniors, people with pre-existing conditions. If you can handle that, then we can go into the general population.
So do have a little more information on that. So I agree, especially the next phase would be, like Charlie said, the at-risk population, and I think that that would still fall similar to this, where we would be able to do that. I did have a conversation today with AccuLabs out in Jersey, that's who the county of Cushing is using. They're willing to come in and do, like, hold community-sized events at no cost to the county. So what their proposal, you know, talking with them today, their proposal would be to come in on the 5th and the 6th of December, set up a drive-through clinic at the elementary school. We would support that with probably some fire and police personnel there to support their staff, but they would, they would take care of the testing. They would, they would bill insurance directly, anyone's insurance directly, so there'd be no cost to the individual. Anyone that doesn't have insurance would, if you provide your social security number, that would be paid for by the federal government money that they have available. So anyone would be able to be tested, whether you have insurance or not. Their, their thing was to do it on, you know, I don't wanna rush it, but I think we could have it set up, where we could have a community testing event on the 5th and 6th, Saturday and Sunday, using the elementary school parking lot. And, you know, there'd be minimal cost, probably one detail officer, and we'd have probably two firefighters, you know, and the duty staff over there supporting the operation, but... Wanted to get your opinion on that.
Are you gonna have the people necessary while the toy, the toy drive is going on?
Yeah, I don't think, just wanted to make sure. Actually, none of the paramedics are in teeth, so I don't think it'll have an impact.
So with the same effect, we could do anybody in the town that wants to, or...
Basically, give us an opportunity to advertise, you know, a couple weeks to advertise and let people know we're gonna have the, the event. And then anybody who wants to come in and be tested, I mean, they would just pull up, we'd do the, the drive-through thing, they'd have a copy, if they had, they'd make a quick copy of their insurance card, or provide AccuLab with their social security number to be built out. We wouldn't have any involvement in that whatsoever, it would just be supporting them, be there for like logistical purposes and to support the operation.
Chief, would this just be the, would it follow the same sequence? They'd do the rapid test and then the nasal?
No, this is the PCR, it's all PCR.
So all nasal, all nasal swabs, yeah?
How would they get the information back from this company? How, how would they receive the information, whether they're negative or positive?
I believe it's on, your results will be available online.
Right, and for instance, when I've been tested in Rhode Island, unless it's at a lab doing the testing right there and then, they'll, they have a portal, that you have the website address for, you sign in through the portal, and you get your results.
What is the difference between the rapid test and the...
The nasal test is a good test.
Nasal is... Right, so the rapid test is an antibody test, so we'll know that you were exposed at some point.
So is that blood, or is that...
It's blood, finger stick, yeah. So sort of like a glaucoma, like if someone's a diabetic, they do it like that. Doesn't necessarily tell if there's active virus, so that's why we would do a nasal swab if that, if, if we had anything other than a positive result.
What I was told, what I had mined on was that the blood test, the false positives can be there, the false negatives are very, very few. And, but it's rapid, so then that's why, in terms of the smaller procedure we're talking about, okay, fine, we'll get you the, we'll get you that one. But if we had hundreds of people dealing with the rapid test, then we'd have a whole lineup, in essence, a holding pen, for people waiting to find out the results right there and then. What they did with me, for instance, is they called me on my cell phone, says, "Come on back in," which is a good sign, as opposed to go over to the tent outside the building, which is a bad sign. So the, but with the size we're dealing with, it'd be the nasal. So, you know, for instance, Rhode Island Convention Center, that's where they do the asymptomatic, where people are traveling, you get in your car, or if you don't have a car, you can actually walk in, but it's car-driven, and you just get through there, there's folks, all the processing's happening, and then you leave, and it's usually 24 to 48 hours later, you get your test results.
I think it's a good idea. I think it will lend to a peace of mind to those people who are wondering, especially us seniors, you know, Tom and I.
That would be correct, yes.
And plus, it's, it'd be more accessible than having to drive to a hospital, drive out of town, and get done right here, and it doesn't disrupt your schedule.
They could just stop in and be tested. I mean, there are testing sites in the area, but there's nothing in Halle, you know, geographically where it could have been a little isolated, so...
So I guess there are two decisions. One, if you wanted to give the chief the go-ahead for the municipal testing program, we'll start off with stage one with municipal employees. I think one thing, chief, we want to make sure, we're telling you, no one is required to get that one thing tested.
Absolutely, no, I, right again, any employee that wants.
Yeah, right. And then the, the other thing would be to, and I think you need to work with the school, because I know, and I know if Youth and Rec's having basketball or anything over there during the weekends, but to work through the logistics, to make sure everybody there knows what's going on, but to give the approval of the townwide for the 5th, 6th. And I assume they'll, they'll give you information about the hours. Are there people gonna make appointments?
She said no. She said basically it's just, they'll come in, you know, luckily, we have a good park, setup over there, all the cars up, so that would be the, the idea. We might have a tent set up for the people doing the test. You know, just a couple logistical things that we have to work out, rest, restroom facilities, have a tent set up for the people doing the test, that type of thing, but I think...
And this is whether permitting or no matter what?
I believe they do it no matter what, once we have the date set.
Well, I would maybe allow chief to go ahead with the primary thoughts of testing our employees, who are taking the full, the test.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Further, I think the grid, I think we'll have our agency come in, which is, we get no heavy lifting to do except for support, and it's not gonna cost us that much money to do so. And it's convenient. Especially... Now, do you plan on having the EMTs all trained, stick to...
A good percentage of them will be, especially the full-time staff, all the full-time staff will be trained. The, there's a, you know, we, we do training monthly anyway, so I would just substitute that, this month's training with, you know, training on how to do the test, which there's a gentleman out of, he's a Rochester, he lives in Rochester, but he's done the training for other communities, so we just bring him in, have him do the, the training. It's fairly simple. I mean, we, we already do, you know, we don't do nasal swabs, but like glaucoma testing and stuff like that, we already do, so I don't think that it's too intense.
You know, what type of system have you set up for the storage or...
What was that?
For storage of the testing material.
So we would be able to store the tests at the, at the fire station, the ones that we, we purchased for the employees. The other, the other tests that we do for the community event, AccuLabs will handle all of that. Which is, like you said, takes the, that's a, you know, I would love to be able to do a community event ourselves, but logistically, I think it's a, it's a big, big thing for, for an agency that's never done it before.
And they have, they probably brought in a number, so they, you know...
Do we need an action on that?
Yes, it would be helpful to have it on the record.
You made the motion, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, chief? No? Moving on? Ah, no news is good news. All right, I guess then we can get on to some of the...
We're giving the legal front zero, so we can move on to recycling. Yeah, I know that, I don't know if they ever got copies of these memos. Wanna explain?
I have them, does anyone else want?
These are from Tamaducci. Had about a half dozen in each category, but go ahead.
Yeah, they just, she had asked them, they're not totally cycling, Bill. Just, she had asked them to be a B. They were in a, were given from an MLC, and now are to renew ownership.
So basically, the idea being that the person who was responsible went away, the person who was now owning the place wasn't told and couldn't, included a settlement agreement for the sale of the property.
Didn't have the option of abating it or not abating it, or...
Yeah, so the person who owns it now, you know, didn't have, shouldn't be held responsible... Yeah, so the person who owns it now, you know, didn't have, shouldn't be resp, held responsible for the previous owner where they didn't have a chance to be a part of the settlement agreement for.
One, one, this is one scenario, this, because they were, uh, the MLC, okay, so that, the, um, one, you got the board, that, yeah, right there. This is the difference, may I run this one?
These were all omitted from the MLCs?
Yes.
Have we since corrected that? Well, this is clearly our fault for not including them on the MLCs, so.
I would move that we abate.
Or just in the memo from Pamaducci dated November 5th, I believe it is.
Well, I guess, if they're better judgmental, we move that we abate the following.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, this, this one right here is, um, five of them, and she asked them to be a date. Um, because these bills match with the previous owners. Subsequent owners were not abated for time sake. All bills conceiving of an updated date.
Well, that would be the same thing, right? They didn't get out on the MLC.
No, this one dated, it was subsequent on the side.
It may have been a mix in that the bills went out at a time when the MLC might have already occurred and then the bills happened and the sale happened. So, they weren't put on the MLC because they didn't exist at the time of the MLC.
But these are the new owners we're talking about?
Yeah.
Who did not know that the bills, but they got the bills?
No, the old owners got the bills. But they didn't appear on the MLC because the MLC was...
They hadn't been generated yet.
Was there an error?
I'm sorry?
Did we make a mistake?
No, it was just...
It's a timing issue. In essence, what happens is you ask for an MLC, if the bill hasn't been issued, it doesn't appear on the MLC. So, the bill didn't exist at the time of the MLC. The bill was then issued and sent out after the MLC to the previous owner or the owner of record at that time when the bill was issued. And so, the new owner was never notified, it never appeared on the MLC because at the time of the MLC, it didn't exist.
Well, Pam asked me to, Pamaducci said it asked me to abate the bill?
Yes.
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, she didn't classify this one as that, or what?
So, it's, so that, so what are you talking about, 2604?
Yeah, that's...
Yes, that was, I received that, so that was, this person was wrong on this one. That's exactly what happened down there.
So, what's your feedback on that?
I'm just kind of reading it here. So, the, the name under the bill number is... 2604. Is the same as what's on the bill?
Well, see, you see, of course, maybe, of course, the same, first line, and there's a subsequent owner and then...
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
Sometimes, um, happens is when it goes through the mail order, it sometimes it doesn't pick up the subsequent owner's name. And I get the first person, and then it might just...
The mail gets forwarded?
Yeah.
Over, and then that person might have got it, and then it might have said...
No, I don't live there anymore.
Yeah, often, yeah, um, definitely accessible, obviously, but then I'm like...
Yeah. I, I mean, this doesn't seem to be any fault of the current owner. So, I guess that that would give us reason to abate it. And they're not going to use it, right? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, no, that person does have a contract, and I did get a lot of, um, that they do, so...
Any comments?
Motion to abate. Two, 2604.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, this is saying they both dropped it off on October 1st?
Yeah, like, that person came in last week, I said, "Let me pull up that packet", and there was another person that asked the same thing, and I said, "The same thing, my, my, my". I mean, I can only...
It appears that contrary to our usual MO of stamping for the previous day, there is a significant likelihood that they did get stamped incorrectly. So, when we told the general we were going to investigate a little further, this is what we discovered. And in addition to his, we found another one that had come in at the same day and should have been stamped.
I move that we abate. 1861 and 1333.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Steve Bateman just came in today?
Yeah.
And it's not on PMS, correct?
Um, no, it's just...
I don't think anything on Pam's list was a 2021.
So, this current owner's one that just did not come in in time?
Yeah, it was...
And it wasn't... All right, so it wasn't like within the day or on the day or...
Both would not abate.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we mercifully finished with the baitments?
No, we really...
At least we're finished with today, right?
So, Pope's Tavern Route Project, the team met last Thursday. The, hoping they're going to start November 30th or thereabouts. They're in the process of ordering the materials. They think that that was back on Thursday. They think they would have the materials available, all of them, by the 30th and be able to start work. Susan Lawless for the Council on Agent was there. We had a couple of people from the contractor. Tom was there, Rob was there, I was there, the architect was there. So, project's moving forward.
The, for, just for impressions, they seem to have a realistic handle on this. Materials are becoming a problem everywhere for everyone. Uh, he was hopeful he could get the materials and he wanted to leave himself a little bit of room, so he's hoping by the end of the month. He thought maybe a little sooner, but, you know, he wanted to be realistic and, you know. Uh, you know, it's not the best time of year to start this, but it is what it is. We, we need to have it done. And they seem anxious to do it and, uh, just if impressions mean anything, they seem capable and they seem like they have a handle on it and are anxious to get on with it, so. Uh, hopefully, we can start.
They, they had gone up previously into the attic area to see how bad the damage was?
Yeah, and there was some discussion, the, the architect initiated, having to do with the amount of purlins. Uh, because the sheets break at eight feet, the purlins were 32 inches, uh, not at 32 inches, they were less than 32 inches. So, there's going to be either a foot of waste or they had to put in additional purlins. The contractor said that he would put in additional purlins to be sure that the depth is secure and that was the right answer. So, again, if impressions mean anything, they seem to have a handle on it, so hopefully, we'll get it done. And we've had some work experience from this particular contractor in the past at the Highway Department that was, uh, more than satisfactory, so.
Did you give an estimate of how long the date to do it?
Uh, I didn't really hear...
I think it was two to four weeks depending on the weather.
Was the Santa bringing him a gift or not?
I'm sorry, Troy.
Was the Santa bringing him a gift or not?
No. Santa would be about coming in about the end of the project, so maybe.
The, the problem, of course, this time of year is, you know, your daylight is so limited. You're wrapping up early. We'll see. I assume he's going to do it sectionally, I didn't ask him that. I mean, that would, well, I suppose maybe some of it, you can't, because you've got the...
You're going to take the...
Yeah, you're going to take the whole thing off, yeah.
Because Fields Farms, no news, possible regional single street recycling program. Uh, Steve's going to be working with the other communities involved, the town. Um, we're not signing anything yet, but, um, his intention is to see how this offer goes and whether it's going to make sense for the town. But goods and provisions, just a reminder, we're going to be discussing at the regular selectmen's meeting next Tuesday night on the 23rd, 23rd, I think it was, 24th. Um, the updated possible HCA. I have been copying comments that I get from people for the board. On the possible stop signs on Hillside and 10th and 11th. We had gotten a report from OCPC. Um, I think the consensus was that if we were going to put stop signs in, that it would just be a regular two-way. But Steve is opposed to putting any stop signs in at this point. He doesn't feel that the traffic volume is, necessitates having the stop signs there. So, unless the board specifically instructions, instructs him to, under the town's traffic rules and rights to put stop signs there, we're going to be leaving that alone for the time being. Or, and I don't know if the board wants to take a vote to confirm what Steve's opinion is, so it's on the record, so if someone comes back to the board later on, you'll be on the record, A, that you were aware of what Steve's recommendation was, which was no stop signs and that at this point, your approval of it.
I, I really don't see at this point in time, there's really hasn't been any incidents out of it that I'm aware of, you know, what they call the, to leave the, like, the stop sign. Like, if people were doing it on a little paper, but, you know, just as a stranger coming through.
Is there a, is there a white line or anything painted this of people?
I've been, me, I remember, and Troy would know better, but I don't remember any lines at all on those streets.
No. My, my only concern is because the issue's been brought up and we chose to not put up a stop sign?
Is that why they made the...
Yeah, I don't know if we have any, uh, any liability issues there.
Well, the question is...
Not directly, but...
The question is really because there's a problem.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
I mean, if someone would say we're liable, would say, well, you were told about the problem, except the question that becomes, is there an actual problem?
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, anytime you drive into an intersection, there's always the possibility without the stop signs, the possibility somebody's coming the other way. But that's on every street in town.
Well, I think that's why, you know, people that get the licenses know that probably the instruction is when you get to an intersection way and there's nothing visible there to stop. But proceed with caution, like, like, you know, what Charlie says. I, I think if, if we start responding to every single complaint...
Then we'll have stop signs everywhere.
Then we have stop signs everywhere, because, you know, and, and, you know, they need to be real. If it wasn't an accident, and I won't say a good decade ago, or even further, you know, going to the, to the survey, so, I mean, again, it's a force decision, but I know that we had, I think, a response to the traffic, you know, responding, we didn't feel that it was needed.
Well, that's good to know. I, I, I don't have a problem not putting a sign there and...
And we obviously know there's going to be some, some pushback just from where, where the complaint originated from.
Well, there's always pushback for everything.
Yeah.
I would move that we, at this time, we left the stop signs on Lemon Street and Hillside Street, 20th Avenue.
I'll second that.
You said a question. So, typically, in a way, I guess we don't have that sort of setup anymore as new streets. But in new subdivisions like Down Highland, do we have stop signs where...
You mean, the cul, coming out of cul-de-sacs into the main circle?
No, like, there's a couple of roads down there that come, like...
There's nothing inside the subdivision.
Yeah, because for Highland, you've got a series of cul-de-sacs all coming into the circle.
I thought when you went down, when you pulled in, you go to the right, you drive around. I thought there was a street that branches off.
There is.
There is, across, you go straight and then there's a...
Yeah, the signs, the...
The signs, they're...
Yeah, sorry. None of them is a division, there is something, you get the poetry, you know?
Oh, yeah, Thompson Street.
I'm going to try to say Thompson Street again.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Although, that would be the one place you'd think somebody would notice, uh, this street going...
Well, you're at a T-intersection.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, uh, unless there's another question, I guess we're ready for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Tony Gilman and myself will be meeting with Labor Relations later this week on the request by the patrol officers to remove the intermittent offices from the Barbie unit. We're not dealing with contract negotiations here, it's on the public agenda, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that. We get, we didn't, but the board helped gun in a anonymous complaint about sludge being dumped over Nazarell Farms on Hemlock Lane. I know that Bob and Alan have responded to that and have discussions with Mr. Nazarell. It can be a legal use, but I believe there may be a permitting process to allow for it and Mr. Nazarell has told the board to help that he'll be working with them if he wants to do any more of this type of operation there. Thought about white, Bob?
Yep, that's right. It isn't on the practice, you know, so that's, you got to work.
What kind of sludge are we talking about? What kind of sludge are we talking about?
It, it came from, uh, it didn't get the double A yet, because it's identified everything, but...
I don't know, if you guys are going to go into detail.
To the best of my knowledge, it has, uh, none of the toxic metals, it's, it's usually a problem with sludge.
All right, so that's just an information.
Yeah, there's no action for the board to take. It's just simply that the board helped us. The board helped it send it over. They wanted to make sure that the board's letting them know, but there's no action for the board to take. Uh, 748 Old Plymouth Street, just on the change of address. We had a resident who has frontage both on Circuit and on Old Plymouth. The house faces Circuit, but the driveway is of Old Plymouth. And after consultation with the chiefs and the board assesses everything, the address will be changed for that parcel from Old Plymouth to Circuit. There'll be a sign up on the driveway on the Circuit side, so it's pronounced where that, where to get to the house, even though the house frontage will have... The house front faces Old Plymouth, but the driveway isn't there really. Um, holiday decorations, ice sculptures and other ways to celebrate without holidays in Halifax. Um, I had asked Sandy... Um, I had asked Sandy, there's probably a couple of thousand dollars sitting in the DIT account. Um, we did not put in active appropriation for this year, because we, when we met earlier this year with a town meeting, we realized that we weren't going to do holidays in Halifax. But it doesn't mean that the money couldn't be spent on outdoor decorations. Um, we even talked about the possibility of doing an ice sculpture. We didn't want, it wouldn't be done as an event per se, in the sense of have everybody here at seven o'clock on such and such a date. But if we had a cold, weather cold enough or long enough that people could come by each evening before the whole thing melts. Um, I didn't know, Chief, whether there was any interest in doing anything. I talked to Scott, for instance, about putting maybe more decorations, like up in the trees here or something.
Yeah, Tom, I, I correspond a little bit with Tom, you know, as far as the committee, and she was hoping that we still did some, you know, decorations and things. And I said, I think that was the intent, but I don't have any, you know, I think soon it stopped us all of that. As far as the ice sculpture, I haven't talked, uh, I haven't spoke to, to him about it, but generally, it's around nine hundred dollars for the ice.
Is the board interested in doing something if that's what... Yeah, I think anything we can do exterior is, is a plus, it's still a community kind of thing. And Jesus, it's become so traditional, I didn't even say, it's become so traditional.
Would you want to keep the, like, I can reach out to him about the stuff, to see if he would be able to do the sculpture? Would you want to keep it in line with when we generally do holidays in Halifax? I'll push it back a little closer towards Christmas when the weather might be a little colder, or maybe since.
Yeah, that might, that might, yeah, I mean, looking at the long-range forecast, would certainly be something to do. Generally, it's colder on December 20th and December 10th, right? Yeah, well, usually. Yeah, I know. Yeah. Look, I, we've all been around when it's been 70 degrees on Christmas. Yeah, exactly, and we've all watched that ice melt in a couple minutes.
Yeah, I know. So, yeah, I mean, if the board, I'd, I'd be happy to talk to him about it.
I would think if you worked with him and looked at the long-range forecast, and what Dave's worked with him, and worked with Scott to figure out the lighting setup.
Yeah, assuming he's still willing to do it, because that's...
I'm sure, my guess is that it would be...
Yeah, he, he's so amazingly good.
Unbelievably talented, if you will, if you saw.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea to do something, because it takes away some of the team that's, uh, who's placed it at their home for all these months.
Yeah.
And the cat doesn't like it.
Yeah, and we can put it, just like we've done the past couple years, uh, on the town hall.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can still decorate buildings and, and get some of the trees outside or something, I mean, we talked to Scott. Okay. Um, and then there's the surplus vehicle.
So we have one vehicle that we took out of service, um, at my request, it'd be declared surplus, that... The lighting package on it went, it would be a few thousand dollars for us to replace that, which doesn't...
What kind of vehicle, we talked...
It's the, it's a, a 2014 Explorer.
Is this a vehicle that's mechanically in good shape?
So it does have a slight skip in the transmission, um, it's up a highway now, we took it out of service. I know Bob had expressed interest in it, um, it'd be something that Dave went for.
But would replace, if we were going to use it on a civilian basis, it would replace the vehicle we have out in the parking lot right now. Right, which is become difficult, that's why I'm asking, and that could be available for everybody.
So, we did paint over the red, you know, ideally, you would repaint the black, it would probably be a couple hundred dollars, but, I mean, we just painted it black, we're certainly not professional painters.
Oh, come on.
We just don't want red and black vehicles driving around.
Why?
They're notorious, the red and black vehicles.
Right, so, but it is up there, I know Bob had expressed interested in, um, I talked to Dave about it, and he could take a peek at what the issue was as far as the skip, it's not, we continue to use it, it's had it for a long time.
But it's probably in better shape than...
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It was now a former animal control vehicle. But I, I, one of the things we were doing was we were waiting to see when the police vehicles got...
Yeah, well, one of them just, one of them's already in front of it, because it was going to, uh, we locked out, because we, we told them to replace the engine on it. So before we did that, I just sent it up there, yeah, I'm going to do it, we're going to surprise them a trend, it's not worth it, uh, on the...
That was, we were just, that was just something we were able to... I can't believe how many police vehicles he's got on his lot up there.
Oh, excuse me, you want it, you want to drop it off?
Yeah.
It, you can't move it.
All the way down, both sides, and on the old lot down the street.
Yeah, I understand.
Just...
At least we've got a hard road.
Looks like he got the whole run of vehicles for a month there.
We have that lot.
Anyway, uh, yeah, that'd be something to... Well, so if the board were to, they could approve the transfer of the vehicle from the fire department officially to civilian use as long as it can be repaired. Anything else that needs to be done? Do you want it colored, painted? The lighting package isn't a problem, right?
I, I, I mean, if, if, I would get a make-o estimate personally to pay it, it'd probably be a couple hundred dollars. Or I could bring it up to, um...
Nick might be able to spread it out.
To Nick, just to, I mean, it does not have to be anything fancy.
Yeah, just, anything's better than what we're drawing.
Right, okay, I mean, that'd be certainly helpful.
Easy for me to say about you drawing that vehicle.
I tried Scotty not letting him, worse than the Blues Brothers, Scott.
Yeah.
Just to put a perspective on it.
Yeah, well, what's happening is it's not getting used enough because it's so suspect, so... The plan was always to have it be sort of interdepartmental inspectional services, if you will, type vehicle. So, so this would be a good thing, especially where it's got four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that's a big leap forward. So, uh, I guess what we need is a motion...
I would move that we transfer the Explorer for the, for the, the vehicle company.
What's that?
Crown Vic.
Crown?
Yeah, to replace the...
We'll take the Crown Vic off the road.
The Crown Vic, take it off the road. If this position is bad, are we going to drop it?
Well, we should probably declare that. We can try and surplus it and sell it, Steve has a couple of other vehicles, I believe he's... Yeah. Working with the surplus company to... Yeah, somebody will, somebody will take it up.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Yes, the Crown Vic's taken off the road. Yeah, so we'll just transfer the plates to the... And I have, even though I have stuff on the list, sorry, Pam, go ahead.
So you have, okay, the one, the two that we did, um, that was one. So I think we can rescind the vote, because they have previously denied that there's not production to do there, or is there...
If you want to officially rescind them, sure, go ahead, do it. By proving the... You've effectively rescind. Yeah. No, no, it's a good valid question. Um, I don't have anything, even though I have it on the list, I don't have anything for the executive session. So that's pretty much it?
I, I do have a, can I talk about the...
Oh, right, about Tom's side, um, yes, so...
Yeah.
So Tom decided, and then...
Well, can you explain to the other?
I don't know, it's...
Chief, can you explain to what?
Oh, it's a grant for 2,700 dollars to purchase a, um, you know, the lights that you see out on the highway now, like the big balloon-style lights?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what it is.
Okay. So we'll have the board officially affirm Tom's signing on Thursday.
I move that we have the chair signed in form.
Troy, we'll, we'll put the actual motion on Thursday, you'll vote to affirm. Free money is always good. Okay, I'm good. Anyone else have any?
We just had the school committee meeting tonight that...
Six o'clock, so I gave each of you a copy of the... And that's not going to be Zoom, that's going to be Google?
Yes.
So are you planning on making a decision tonight, or...
Uh, I'm assuming that we vote tonight?
Now, how's that going to work? It's, it's... Okay, so each member of the school committee, each member of the board selection gets one vote. I assume, Gordon, you only get one vote, you don't get two?
I'm assuming I get one, but...
Yeah, okay, so, um... You'd have to vote. And it had, and so there'll be three of you, let's call it three of you and three other school committee members, that's six. The person who, it's not a plurality, it's majority, so four people have to vote for the same candidate. Okay. You can, you know, you'll do the interviews, people can nominate, and then you close the nominations, because I'll be on the finance committee call during this time. Um, close the nominations, and it's all roll call, because it's on, it's virtual, so you do a roll call. If nobody gets four votes, you do another roll call, if nobody gets four votes, you do another roll, you wait until you get four votes.
Keep going until someone gets it.
By your poll?
Yes.
Send up the smoke.
Color of the candidates. Yeah, what color is the smoke coming out of it? And then Jason has to come over and... Alright, in that case, I think we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, take care, stay safe, and we'll see you soon.